If everybody, anybody that signed up tonight that wants to speak, if you didn't grab a number, please grab a number to coincide with where you signed up, just to help keep it flowing. Maybe you ought to leave one out there in case there's a few newcomers or anything. That's true. Want to welcome you all. Uh, I should do a few introductions first. I've got a volunteer here. Steve Peterson, gonna kind of take notes on what people say tonight. Wade Mitchell, myself, Doug DeBoer. We're waiting on Darren Tison, hoping he shows up. He's told several people that he's coming. He might be a little late, he was late the last time he came to a meeting. So we're gonna go ahead and get started without him. If you please stand, we'll pledge to relieve this together.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, it might be a good idea to silence yourself on the night, please, for the next however long it takes us here. I'm gonna hopefully not do a lot of talking tonight. This is a public hearing where we are inviting you to guess to give your opinion of whether we should have a moratorium on wind, six month, or twelve month on solar. We had you sign in. We've got a three-minute limit. Now, if you're in the middle of a sentence, go ahead and finish your sentence. Or you're about the end of a paragraph, go ahead and finish your paragraph. But we'll see how it goes. We've got about, oh, I'm guessing thirty people signed up or so. So thirty times three is ninety minutes. That's an hour and a half. We'll try to keep it moving. Uh, my personal secretary over there, Andrew, has got a timer. She's not my personal secretary, that's right. She's just my wife tonight. But she's a timekeeper.
She got moved up.
And if technology fails, I've got a kitchen timer. I've been playing with it. All right, we'll start out with, uh, number one. Dave, is it Helsin?
Hellstern.
Hellstern?
Yep.
And you wanna, if you folks want to use the mic, you're welcome to it. If you want to just stand up and speak from where you're at, it's whatever you're comfortable with. And please, please give your name and where you're from when you start. Thank you for reminding me of that. Let me get this a little closer.
Did everybody hear me back there?
Yeah, too loud.
My name's Dave Hellstern, I'm from Des Moines, Iowa. I, just to give you some background, I was born and raised on a farm outside of Canixville in Seer County, Iowa. Uh, just seventy miles, uh, east of here, right down Highway thirty, along Lincoln Highway. So I went to the University of Iowa, I went to Drake University Law School. I lived in Iowa my entire life. I want you to know this background, so you know I'm not some big city lawyer that's trying to bully you from afar and is out of touch. I'm the attorney for Salt Creek Wind, that's why I'm here tonight. I'm the one who's been sending letters, trying to get everyone to understand. Apparently, people are still not understanding. There's questions, people are misinterpreting what I've said. So I've come to give you the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey used to say on the uranium station. I want to give you the rest of the story, not just what TCAT's been telling you. I'm letting everyone know that Salt Creek Wind will be suing TCAT and its key members for the wrongful actions taken so far. First off, this proposed moratorium you are contemplating would only affect my client, Salt Creek Wind, at this point. There are no other wind developers that we are aware of that are actively pursuing projects. Apex is gone, so good, good job on you, TCAT. But, right now, any action you guys are taking is only going to affect Salt Creek Wind. So since we're the only ones being affected, we take this personally. We've been working on this project for many, many years. There's been, there was no resistance, not even an inkling in this county, until this year when TCAT suddenly popped up. Back in June of 2020, the Tama County Board of Supervisors sent a letter to the Iowa Utilities Board in support of Salt Creek Wind's project, as, as did the Tama County Economic Development Office. We have relied on Tama County's representations for over two and a half years that it was going to support Salt Creek Wind's project. So for this to come up now, this is a slap in the face to us. We've already, we're already too far down the road. We've already done all of the permitting for Phase One. This has always been a two-phase project. So Phase Two needs to happen, and we need to be allowed to do Phase One and Two. At this time, you guys, TCAT specifically, trying to bully us, bully the Board of Supervisors, now bully the zoning board to do something, that's not the right answer. We've asked you to come and talk to us, please come and talk to us.
Thank you, sir. Number two is Al Shafanbaum.
My name is Al Shafanbaum, I live in Dyger. I've been a farmer all my life. Now, I'm here tonight to ask for a moratorium on the wind project because we need to get the ordinances updated. The ordinance would only affect what's coming from here on out. So changing the ordinances won't change what Salt Creek has already been approved of. But what I also wanted here, when we start working on our ordinances is, what are we gonna do when these things are fifty years old? When your grandkids, after you've signed this paper, and it no longer generates electricity and they have to remove it? It's gonna cost them a million dollars. So I think in this ordinance, to protect the people that I sign up to get a wind tower, we need to protect them and make sure there is some money there to tear it down at the end of their life. So we need to have an indemnity fund or some sort of a fund that started on day one, not later in the, in the process, but started on day one so that there'll be enough money there to remove the project from that farm when it is finally not generating electricity and its life is over. Otherwise, the farmers don't get stuck with it. We know we don't want the county to get stuck with it. So let's hope that we can protect the people that sign up to get one of these wind towers and also protect the people that don't want them by keeping them farther from their house.
Number three, Nancy Yuska.
You can pull that right out of there if you want. My name is Nancy Yuska. My husband Dennis and I own land in Buckingham Township that we actively farm. This property has been in Dennis's family for over eighty years. We have always been of the opinion that farmland is the ultimate investment because, as they say, they aren't making any more of it. We are also very aware that living and working in rural Iowa is an ideal that many families strive for, young and old. The quiet, the solitude, the closeness to nature and the land are second to none for quality of life. Thousands of families living in rural Tama County know of these blessings. The previous generations who have loved this land, toiled on this ground, and passed it on to us, knew that you never destroy productive farmland, but you cherish it. It's really as simple as that. This is farm ground, not an industrial park for the greedy developers and the well-connected of this county to make fortunes off of government subsidies. We do not want to be surrounded by these turbines that entirely destroy all the values of living in the country I have touched on. The excavation that takes place on this valuable farmland to construct these massive turbines is jaw-dropping. And this ground will never again have the soil profile and productivity that it does now. It is truly destroyed for all eternity. All the roads built across farm fields to access the turbines destroys even more farmland with compassion and loads of filth brought in. I applaud this zoning commission in your efforts to update the woefully inadequate wind turbine ordinance for Tama County, as well as a formal request for a six-month moratorium on permitting any more turbines to allow you the time to complete this task. I personally would like to see an ordinance enacted without fear or favor that would exclude these turbines from being constructed on farmland with a CSR of over seventy. That would truly protect and preserve these acres. As you know, our surrounding counties have done precisely that. We are relying on you to help us build the defenses against these turbines by strengthening our county's ordinances. Dennis and I are proud to support the grassroots effort of the TCAT Coalition, whose volunteers strive to inform and educate the public about the intricacies of living with and being surrounded by industrial wind turbines. Thank you for the opportunity to share our thoughts and concerns.
This looks like a name I should be able to pronounce. Number four, Tom Swerchewski?
Close enough. All right. Good evening. My name is Tom Szwcheski. I'm from Conifer Power Company, the developer of Salt Creek Wind. A graduate of Iowa State University. I live in Solon, and I've been a zoning professional and a wind energy developer for my entire career. I'm here tonight representing Salt Creek Wind and its approximately thirty-five thousand acres' worth of participating landowners. I attended many Board of Supervisors meetings throughout 2022 to listen to what Tama County Against Turbines, TCAT, members had to say. I spoke twi- at least twice at those meetings, providing project updates, addressing concerns I'd heard, and inviting TCAT to meet with us. We also extended this offer for a meeting several more times to TCAT over the course of 2022, all of which were rejected or ignored. After almost two dozen meetings, Board of Supervisors meetings, I stopped going because there was really nothing productive being said by TCAT and it really just become a waste of my time. Most of TCAT's concerns would have been addressed if they simply read our CUP application, given you guys a copy, I have more handy if anybody wants them, or if they would actually just sit down and meet and talk with us. Why won't TCAT talk to us? When Salt Creek Wind received its CUP approval and obtained its building permits, it followed the rules and it continues to do so. TCAT seems to think that they should get a special set of rules. Why? This isn't new technology. Wind turbines are common throughout Iowa and here in Tama County, too. With all the concerns addressed years ago, the economic benefits of wind projects are also very well-known. According to the Iowa Environmental Council, wind energy accounted for over twenty-two billion dollars in capital investment in rural Iowa, and it generates a hundred and twenty-four million dollars annually to rural Iowa communities. Wind isn't new, it isn't special, and it isn't unknown. It has been around for twenty years and it's here to stay. TCAT isn't special and their concerns aren't new either. TCAT's concerns are outdated, regurgitated nonsense, used to mask their true goal, which is to stop wind because they just don't want to look at them. Iowa has learned how to effectively regulate wind projects, and so has Tama County. A moratorium isn't needed. Please see this request for a moratorium for what it is, a request for special treatment. Please tell TCAT to stop wasting county time and taxpayer money. This commission should do the same. Tell them that Tama County doesn't need a moratorium because it knows what it's doing, that TCAT isn't special, and that their concerns are bogus. Not recommending a wind moratorium will send a clear message to TCAT that Tama County supports wind energy like the rest of Iowa does. It supports Salt Creek Wind and its thirty-five thousand acres' worth of landowners, and it supports economic development and progress. At a minimum, table this consideration, you don't even have a quorum. Ask TCAT to meet with us, and maybe you guys should meet with us, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you number five?
I am.
Brady Evans?
Yes. Uh, Brady Evans, I live in Waukees, originally from Emmitsburg, Iowa area. Uh, grew up on a family farm up there, was gonna take over the farm, um, back in early two thousand. Got into renewables. Um, thought it was gonna be a great opportunity for me to supplement some income as a side job and still stay on the family farm. Uh, my dad was in his early forties when I graduated high school, and my grandfather was still farming. What ultimately learned, um, were all the benefits that happened. I had the pleasure of working at Mid-American Energy for ten years. Um, and actually managed the wind farm in Vienna. My biggest role there before I left was actually permitting. I helped counties build ordinances and repowering. So repowering, you go through the same CUP application that you would for a new project. The one thing I found interesting there was all the issues that get brought up. Health, safety. Those hearings were probably the easiest ones I ever dealt with. Those issues never came up. These projects had been up for ten years, and I would urge the board to stop the moratorium and take a look at what you have in the county. I also permitted the project in Ma- our Mahaska County, Powashie County, um, and north as well. These issues just haven't come up until now. And so, look throughout the state, I urge you also to look at different ordinances. You're looking at Worth County ordinance currently. I worked in Palo Alto County. That board took seven or eight different ordinances across the state to build what they thought was best for everybody. And I would urge you not to just take a bias of one ordinance that is restricting things. So recommend stopping the moratorium, not passing it, and going in that direction.
Heather Knibl, number six.
Hello, my name is Heather Knibl. I live in rural Trayer on an acreage with my husband and two young kids. I've lived in Tama County my entire life and built a new house on an acreage five years ago. I am in favor of a moratorium on industrial wind projects in Tama County. Our ordinances are very outdated, as they were written several years ago and do not protect the people who live and work around industrial wind turbines. I'm worried about ice throws, fires, lightning strikes, noise, decrease in my property value, infrasound, and potential lack of sleep. One thing that needs updated is for a wind company to be required to send out mailers to everyone in and two miles outside of the proposed footprint of the potential project before signing any leases. This would help notify the acreage owners from the start instead of at the end of the process. Just because we own an acreage and not farmland, our health, property values, and quality of life are just as important, especially when we didn't sign up. Protecting the non-participating landowners is a must. People that do not sign waive their rights, or people that do sign, they waive their rights by their own choosing. Today, the county only notifies anyone around one thousand to eleven hundred feet away from a proposed turbine site. That means no acreage owners get notified. That just played wrong when industrial wind turbines are five hundred and fifty to six hundred and fifty feet tall nowadays. There should also be a full-page color ad in the newspaper notifying the county before any leases are signed with landowners. I also believe for a project to be approved, the proposed footprint should be divided up into sections and all landowner, landowners as well as acreage owners vote. It would need at least a seventy-five percent approval to be approved. Ohio took a vote on an entire county this election, and they got seventy-six percent of the people voting no to wind turbines. I feel setbacks from a house should be one point five miles, as Madison County, Iowa Board of Health recommended this last year. The safety manual danger zone is a must as well, but a setback to be over that from a house and livestock. I'm not going to wear a hard hat in my own yard or leave my residence during a thunderstorm. The setback should also be from a property line as well because a neighbor should not be able to infringe on your right as a landowner. What if you plan to build a house on your farm for your kids down the road? Thank you for the time and appreciate your support to uphold your obligation as zoning members to protect the county's health and safety. I pray that you consider a moratorium. Thank you.
Number seven, Carolyn Adolphs.
I'm Carolyn Adolphs, and I farm in the Geneseal Township. I have a diversified, um, operation row crops. Uh, I have acres of market garden vegetables and fruit trees and a cow calf herd. Well, why is this important? Because I spend majority of my life, um, spring through fall outside. I'm also a twenty-five-year member of the Tama County Conservation Board, which oversees county parks, preserves boat ramps, wildlife, and other conservation areas. I am encouraging the Board of Supervisors and the zoning board to impose a six-month moratorium on commercial wind turbine projects in order to update our ordinances. Tama County and surrounding counties have some of the richest land and most fertile land in the world and needs to be protected for our children and future generations. We have always been known as the breadbasket of the world. That is a good designation and one we can be proud of. We will be judged in how we treat our land and what we allow to happen to it. No turbines should be placed on soil with a CSR crop suitability rating above seventy, similar to our forward-thinking neighbors to the east, Benton County. As a Tama County Conservation Board member, I am tasked with ensuring that we protect our natural resources. The Wildlife Bureau of the DNR, the Department of Natural Resources, um, has developed criteria for commercial wind turbine construction. And while these are not laws, they're just recommendations, um, these are some of the following guidelines. Um, no wind turbines should be placed within one mile of public land, such as around BTF Clark's Park or Otter Creek Lichen Park. Turbines should be one-half mile away from forty-acre tracts of grassland, forest, or wetland, which include much of the land around Wolf Creek where I live, where somebody has, um, there's been, I think, three easements, um, signed there, right on Wolf Creek. There are currently parcels signed up for turbines along Wolf Creek. Turbines should also be three miles away from bald eagle's nests with unknown activity or five miles away from known bald eagle sites. I can tell you I see bald eagles all late fall and all through the winter, um, into spring. Almost every day I see eagles, particularly if there's something dead, but you see them all the time. Have we considered the DNR's recommendations? And these are all recommendations from them, this isn't my recommendation. I haven't even addressed the effects these giant turbines may have on my cattle and such as fertility or eating habits. I don't know the whole story and I really don't want to find out. What effect could they have on the weather, which determines whether we have crops or not?
Thank you, Carolyn. Number eight, Jean Wilson.
Hi, my name is Jean Wilson. I live in Tama County with my husband, and we farm together. We raised our family here, our three daughters and our eight grandchildren still live in the county. I have several other family members in Tama County as well, and I am in favor of a moratorium on industrial wind projects in Tama County. Tama County's outdated ordinances need to be updated. I would like to, I would hate to see industrial wind projects take over our beautiful county. Please, let's do research on all the projects before it's too late. Why approve them before having more fa- facts? There are so many things to consider. There is nothing protecting the bald eagles. They have been our national bird of the United States since seventeen eighty-two. DNR only has a recommendation to have wind turbines be five miles away from an active eagle nest. Wind turbines can still be built closer as we do not have an ordinance that restricts turbines from active nests, nor do we have anyone to enforce that ordinance even if we did have it there. Other things like noise, shadow flicker, stray voltage, ice throws, fire risk, leaking oil, possible health risk. It will be too late after all the turbines are built. Please consider a moratorium on industrial wind projects. Thank you.
Cody Hamilton, number nine.
I'm Cody Hamilton, I'm a resident of rural Tama County. I live, uh, up Iclut here. I am in favor of a moratorium. It is no secret that Tama County has dark, rich soil. Soil that has been building for thousands of years under thick native prairie grasses that once covered our county and the root systems extended as far as four feet in the ground. These grasses, season, season after season, held the soil in place, carried nutrients as well as incorporated organic matter that created the best soil in the county, if not in the world. Tama County, Tama soil drains excess water well while retaining adequate moisture for crops and other plant life to thrive. Iowa alone accounts for one-fourteenth of all the food production in the United States. We are the leading producers of corn, soybeans, pork, and eggs in the United States. Farms have been the lifeline of not only our county, but our state for generations and generations. Cover crops, uh, less invasive tillage practices, terraces, uh, field tiling and buffer strips around creeks are all examples of ways that farms have either been or currently, have been or are currently starting to use to preserve more of our precious resources that we have, like our soil. Countless amounts of time and effort have been gone into researching ways to protect this resource. The use of cover crops, for example, is the way to hold the topsoil in place and with root systems. And the crops that are planted will then absorb nutrients in the off-season and then release, release the nutrients back into soil after that cover crop is decomposed in the sea, in the soil, ideally minimizing the nutrient loss in the off-season. Considering all this, among other things, it seems preposterous to me to litter any amount of our county with wind turbines. Concrete structures are known for their ability to stand up to the hands of time. Take the Coliseum in Italy, for example. It was completed in the year eighty A.D. That's nearly two thousand years ago. A more recent example, if you want to call it that, is the Eddie Stone Lighthouse in Cornwall, U.K., which was built in seventeen fifty-nine and is still standing tall. However, this country has no place in our precious farm ground that took so long to develop. The lifespan of wind turbines has been claimed to be anywhere from fifteen to thirty years. Past wind projects around the world seem to indicate that fifteen years is more likely accurate and in many cases, less than that. Nonetheless, the lifespan of the turbine and the little energy that produces is trivial compared to the centuries or perhaps, perhaps millennia that it will take, uh, it'll take a toll on our county with dealing with the remnants of these so-called green energy products, all at the expense of the residents and landowners for generations to come. The huge foundations do not decompose and they do not erode. They're here to stay. Turbines do not produce power consistently. This means that even when they produce electricity, uh, they can either essentially fill the gaps, uh, by unlikely gaps left by better, more efficient, and more reliable sources of energy or an energy store and large batteries made from cobalt, which is often mined by, uh, Democratic Republic Congo. And they're known for enslaving children and lithium, which is deep in the mines in the flats of Australia, Chile, and China.
Thank you. Richard Arp.
Thank you for letting me speak on shadow flicker and ice throw. My name is Richard Arp. I live in Dyger now and I farm four miles east of Iclut here for over a half-century. This fall, when I was picking corn, it was almost sunset. This fall, when I was picking corn, it was almost sunset and the sunlight was going through the corn causing shadow flicker. It was like the sun was being turned on and off. That is what shadow flicker is and it almost made me ill just in a short time. Shadow flickers should not be allowed to bother someone that does not want it on their place. Wind towers can throw ice shards three to four times the length of their blades. No one should have to worry on their own place about ice shards being thrown and endangering their safety. Please place a moratorium until you have a chance to update the ordinances so that property owners are safe from shadow flicker and ice shards. Thank you very much.
Jim Smith, number eleven.
Hello, I'm Jim Smith, a lifelong resident of Tama County. I am in favor of a moratorium on wind turbines. I have been an outdoorsman all of my life. I love nature as God created it. Wildlife populations have declined over fifty percent in the last fifty years, even more so in Tama County with extensive farming. Infrasound should be limited to forty L max at property lines. Infrasound is a high-frequency sound emitted from wind turbines. Humans cannot hear it. Animals can hear higher pitches, frequencies than humans. I'm acquainted with a farmer and outdoorsman in Paushit County. He loved to harvest predators such as coyotes during the winter months. He told me one year he had signed an easement for three turbines to be built on his farm. I talked to him a year later. He said he made one of the biggest mistakes of his life. The wind turbines had driven off all the wildlife on his farm. Another friend of mine lives on an acreage near Laurel, Iowa. His neighbor had a wind turbine built near my friend's house. After they powered up the turbine, the infrasound hurt his dog's ears so much the dog no longer wanted to leave the house to play in the yard. At first, he had to drag the dog out of the house to go to the bathroom. The sound affects your pets and livestock also. I drove to the Vienna Wind Farm in Gladbrook one day. I stopped on the road adjacent to a wind turbine. I got out of my vehicle to listen to the sound of the blades. A couple on a four-wheeler rode by. They lived just down the road and said after a while you get used to the sound. They had lived there for just one year and had some chickens running loose in the yard. They said the turbines weren't too bad after you get used to them because they keep the predators away. There are no hawks, no owls, no coyotes, no raccoons, no possums, or skunks near their acreage to bother the chickens. They said they didn't even have, they didn't even see any deer or wildlife tracks in the mud after a rain. Is this what we want for Tama County? People ask me what's wrong with wind turbines. I tell them to stop on the road adjacent to a turbine, get out of their vehicle, and ask themselves, how close would I like to live by a wind turbine? Thank you.
Bev Espenscheid, number twelve.
Here are a few pictures just for you guys to look at. Good evening. I'm Bev Espenscheid and I reside west of Trayer with my husband Ben. I got loud mouth. I'm in, I'm in favor of a moratorium to pause any new wind or solar projects to allow Tama County to update the minimal outdated commercial wind energy conversion systems and address the need for ordinance specific to industrial solar and battery storage. Tonight, I'd like to specifically discuss our emergency nine-one-one system as it relates to industrial wind and solar projects. Tama County Board of Supervisors approved a six-point-seven million dollar bond to replace the nine-one-one emergency communication systems and the law enforcement radio systems in two thousand and twenty. This system became live earlier this year. I have attended some E-nine-one-one board meetings and proposed the question, who will be responsible for the cost to cure if the turbine project interferes with our new system? The developers have assured us they will immediately correct any interruptions to this service and move a turbine if necessary. They also provided a report from a company that they hired to test the communications using theoretical placement of these turbines. The current easements do not reflect the exact placement of the turbines, so how can we be assured there will be no interference? No one was able to provide anything in writing confirming financial responsibility by the developer or the oversight of the non-compliance. Our current ordinances do not require funds for decommissioning upfront. We, the people of Tama County, could be at risk for the cost if the developer or the landowner with the easement do not have the funds necessary to decommission for any interruption in our service. The emergency nine-one-one system affects every resident of this county. We have any interruption to the service, the developers have said they would correct it. Do you think they have urgency? If it's your mom or dad that needs a medical service or police assistance, I think we would find the urgency to get that corrected right away. Our neighbors in Harden County had to raise the height of their E-nine-one-one towers due to interference with communication caused by the turbines. At the present time, we do not know the height of the proposed turbines in Tama County and cannot rely on a report provided by a company hired by the project developer. I provided you a few pictures. These pictures are just out in Iowa County, just south of us, on the east side of Moringo. The town's similar to Tama Toledo. This is dumping ground for turbines that have been decommissioned. The intention was to recycle the components, but it has failed. In the process of trying to run a fiberglass blade through a chopping process, the particles of fiberglass in the air were shut, they were shut down by OSHA, didn't meet OSHA standards. So as you can see from the one photo, there's a large loader bucket dumping the fiberglass. They were using shipping containers to try to block so it didn't look bad. It's just, this is just another issue that we could face as a county that I think we need to address. Thank you for your time. We appreciate your service for protecting Tama County.
Number thirteen Kurt Burr. All right.
Okay, three minutes goes fast. Sorry. I was talking about the detrimental reliance. Salt Creek Wind has detrimentally relied on representations for over two and a half years by Tama County. That is why the board supervisors and the zoning commission have been advised by their attorney for their insurance not to take any action amending the wind ordinances or issuing a moratorium, which we have established now is only going to affect Salt Creek Wind. We're the only ones out there right now. So rather than sit down and try to work out a solution, TCAT has bullied others online and in person for seven months now. TCAT has not released proposed revised wind ordinances, just snippets here and there, and only proposed a moratorium. TCAT has had seven months since they have started and have gotten nothing accomplished. What is another six months going to do for you? All it's going to do is cause Salt Creek Wind damages. Well, a moratorium is not going to fix anything. It's not going to amend the wind ordinances. It's just going to delay the inevitable and if issued, it's going to cause a lawsuit against your county. If that's what you want, that's fine. Our phase one is all ready to go. It's all permitted. We are going to start. They're going to go up next spring. There's nothing you can do to stop phase one. There's going to be sixty wind turbines going up. There's a phase two. There's always been a phase two. There's only going to be about thirty-five wind turbines in phase two. So if you will allow phase one and phase two, we don't have a problem. But if you're going to try to issue a moratorium that's going to do anything to stop this phase two, which has always been contemplated, let me be clear. If Tama County does anything to stop phase two, Salt Creek Wind will have no other choice but to sue the county and whatever officials are involved in these actions due to the county's over two and a half years of representations that this wind project was not only wanted but accepted. TCAT has done nothing to actually fix the issues at hand. They have just bullied. They bullied the board supervisors with no results. They bullied this zoning commission and have taken up this moratorium issue, which they can't even issue. They can just issue a recommendation. TCAT has bullied landowners that have signed leases with Salt Creek Wind to attempt to get them to break their leases, which is why they're being sued. TCAT has filed two lawsuits against the county. We have not filed any lawsuits. TCAT's filed two lawsuits, both of which have been dismissed. They filed a complaint with Iowa Public Information Board, which was also dismissed. They filed administrative appeals. All but one has been dismissed and will soon be dismissed as untimely, just like everything else. So that's why Salt Creek Wind feels it has no other choice but to sue TCAT and its key members for interference with contractual relations, libel, slander, defamation, and civil conspiracy.
Thank you, sir. Say Colin or Colin Smith?
It's Colin. I'll yield two of my three minutes to date.
So what does this have to do with the moratorium? This just sounds like a bunch of banter threatening TCAT members. It's not really relevant to what we're saying.
Well, we're here because of TCAT. Let's get this clear. The zoning commission was told by their attorney not to issue anything and not to do any meetings. And what have they done? They've done these meetings, so...
You keep talking about bullying and you're standing here for six minutes now threatening to sue.
You're also yielding up his time to speak.
Hey, this is my time to speak, yes.
Actually, it's his time to speak.
No, I yielded it. I don't know if you, I don't know if you, if you have...
I don't know if we're going to allow this yielding to other people, all right?
It's already been yielded once.
Why don't you speak to represent yourself?
Didn't we just, didn't we just have that for the opposition?
We didn't yield to anybody.
So you mean that there's different sets of rules for different people, though?
We didn't change anything.
All right, fine. Let's go ahead. Let's go ahead. Let's go ahead. If you want me to speak, I'll speak. How about this? What I'd like to know is, why is your wife Andrea Devorek sitting at that table exercising an official function when she hasn't been delegated the authority? Does anybody want to answer the question?
I'd ask someone else if I thought I'd get volunteers.
That's not an answer to the question. My answer is why is she here and why is she doing what she's doing?
What is she doing?
She's taking minutes. She's the one that's running the clock. I'm not sure that everybody here was at the last meeting where she actually purported to take the minutes, but she is the one that's running the clock.
You don't trust her?
No, no, it's not about trust. I'm asking what's her legal authority to do it?
Do we need legal authority to run a stop clock?
Yes. So we don't, we don't need legal authority to actually do something?
Do you want me to use three minutes to talk about this, really?
Well, you guys are running up my three minutes, but yes, I'm asking. That's my question.
It's called volunteering.
That's right.
Okay, volunteering is different than actually having legal authority to do what you're doing. I can volunteer to go fight in Ukraine all I want. It doesn't mean I have legal authority to do it on behalf of the U.S.
Tom would you time for us tonight? Would you time for us?
We would let Tom time. We would trust him.
Well, here's the thing. It doesn't matter. The problem is that it's already running. It's her computer. There it is, right there. So she is exercising official authority to either cut me off at one minute and thirty-nine seconds or whatever it is. She can do that. I'm just wondering, what's her authority to do it? Does anybody know?
Sir, have I cut anybody off?
No, 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 no. I'm not asking whether I'm going to cut somebody off. Do I have my three minutes or do I not?
You're using it right now.
Well, I would like to use it if you wouldn't interrupt it. You're asking questions and we're asking.
If you're asking questions, what are we supposed to do?
All right, go ahead and interrupt me as much as you want. What legal authority does she have? I'll go ahead. I'll throw it to the audience. Anybody? No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm asking for legal authority. I'm not asking for, oh, it just seems cool because she's a volunteer. What's the legal authority? Show it to me.
Show me where it's required.
No, no, it's not on, it's not a burden on me to show you where it's required. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I don't know who the hell you are. It doesn't really matter. But the point is, is that it's on you to tell me what the legal authority is.
Could you identify where you're from?
Yes, no, I am disputing it. Show it to me.
Did you identify where you're from?
My name is Colin Smith. I'm an attorney and I'm asking what the legal authority is.
Who are you representing?
I'm sorry, what?
Who are you, who's your client?
Where are you from, sir?
I'm from Westmore.
Thank you. Your three minutes is up. Please sit down.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for...
If anybody else wants to speak and they're here, they're capable of speaking, then speak. There are some people here that I've got letters from that did not make it that I will read. But if you're here, speak for yourself, please. This transferring of time is baloney as far as I'm concerned. All right, number fifteen. Nancy Smith?
Yes. So I'm Nancy Smith and I'm reading this for Linda Moller, who is a rural Tama County resident for the past forty-four years.
And she's not here tonight?
I wish, this is from her. I wish I could be at tonight's meeting to personally tell you, members of the zoning commission, how I appreciate the work you are doing to listen to the people and take the time to improve the wind energy ordinances for the residents of Tama County. I commend you for the work you have done thus far and I thank you. I also would like to have been in attendance to present the petition that many from the Tama County Against Turbine Coalition and others have circulated around Tama County. The petition requests a moratorium on all new commercial wind energy projects. Tama County Against Turbines began a petition online in March on their newly-formed Facebook page. With well over twelve hundred signatures on that petition, we transferred our members of getting signatures to in-person instead and made sure that the signatures were from Tama County residents eighteen years and older. These signatures represent residents from all areas in Tama County. Our petition currently has one thousand and twenty-nine signatures. This petition represents not only the Coalition of Tama County Against Turbines, but the voice of the people of Tama County. One thousand twenty-nine people in Tama County that want to see changes. One thousand twenty-nine people all agree that we need improvements for the best interests of everyone's safety, health, and general welfare. A few of the changes that these one thousand twenty-nine people seek include increasing the setback distances of wind turbines from structures and property lines, taking into account neighboring non-participant landowner rights, as well as many topics that need to be considered. It seems that approximately ninety percent of the people that were contacted willingly signed. That seemed to be an overwhelming number of people that either want regulations to protect their own safety, rights, and freedom or they don't want to destroy the beautiful Iowa landscape or damage our excellent Tama County farm ground. Since eighteen forty-seven, our Iowa motto has been, "Our liberties we prize and our rights we will maintain." The people of Tama County live by that motto. And I have the petition book and you can go ahead and look through. There's lots and lots and lots and lots of pages. I'll let you have it for a while.
All right. Sixteen Judy Capriva.
All right. My name is Judy Capriva. I live in rural Clutier where I have a small galeby herd that my son Anthony and I own and manage. I am asking for a moratorium of our current wind ordinance so that it can be updated to keep our animals safe in addition to our own health. I have just a few examples of how wind turbines affect farm animal life and other wildlife. And these are worldwide. Taiwanese farmer lost four hundred goats over three years after eight turbines were installed nearby. An ag inspector stated that late-night sounds from spinning turbines probably caused... An ag inspector stated that late-night sounds from spinning turbines probably caused sleep deprivation in the goats. Unusual sounds can impact an animal's appetite, growth, and sleep. The goats were unable to sleep and began losing weight prior to dying. In Ontario, Canada, a goat farmer stated all twenty of his nanny goats either miscarried or had goat, or kids that died hours after birth. A horse rancher, he had been in business for forty-five years, he lost six of his eight babies after wind turbines went up nearby in his breeding mares. He stated, um, some of the mares aborted, others had no milk, and others did not conceive. The Altamont wind farm in California killed thousands of golden eagles, mass bat die-offs occur because their lungs explode from changes in the air pressure. Waterloo, Australia, a sheep farmer ended up had a, um, threefold spike in birth defects, lambs had been born with no ears, three legs, and hooves turned backwards, and in that same area, chickens began laying eggs with no yoke. Many people also complained of more health problems, all since turbines started operating nearby. A French farmer with dairy cows, his overall milk production dropped significantly. The cows lost the desire to drink as much water as they normally drank before turbines were erected. We are so divided on this issue, it makes me feel like we need to go back to see what the main cause is. To me, this all depends on which group of scientists do you want to believe, and yes, many believe that there is a climate change emergency. On the other hand, according to over eleven hundred objective, truth-seeking scientists and professionals from over thirty-five countries, there is no climate change emergency, human cause, or otherwise. They directly refute claims from the World Economic Forum and other promoters of climate change catastrophe. They are strongly against efforts to do away with fossil fuels. CO2 is a plant food, not a pollutant, it is essential to all life on Earth. More CO2 is favorable for nature, CO2 is profitable for agriculture, increasing the yields of crops worldwide, unfortunately, sometimes.
Oh, I don't see a seventeen, we're gonna go to eighteen, Scott Snyder.
My name's Scott Snyder, I live north of Cloutier on a small lake ridge. I had a few things to say, but it was very disturbing about this bullying issue and how TCAT is spreading rumors and being malicious and all these kinds of things. I didn't know spreading the truth was bullying. Nobody is maligning anyone. When we look at the history of wind turbines, and now that there's more history about them, the detrimental effect on the environment and humans is true. Whether you want to believe them or not, follow the science, not just the one science, look at both. The carbon footprint, interesting. Making windmills in China, overseas, bringing them here, and the carbon footprint that is put out in the production of all aspects of a windmill, it will never produce enough electricity to offset the carbon footprint that is made from the windmill. Now you can shake your head, and you can say that's not true, but there is true science behind that. That's the unfortunate part, TCAT is informing people the truth behind these windmills. Same with solar power. Solar power doesn't do anything that is helpful except take a massive amount of land. The other problem that people don't understand is, we're worried about the birds and the other animals. Solar and wind kill the pollinators, the bees, the butterflies, the small insects, the creepy crawler things. Those are the things that pollinate most everything on Earth, and when you burn them up and you blow them away, they can't pollinate the fields, the flowers, the trees. If we're gonna do anything, we should be growing trees, massive amounts of trees. They take carbon dioxide in and they make oxygen for us. Think about it, follow the science, not just one side of science.
Thank you. Do you want to take a break for five, ten minutes, or do you want to keep on charging forward? I see a lot of nods, have to keep on going, we won't be here as long that way. Alright, I've got number twenty, Janet Wilson.
Oh, do you need nineteen?
I don't have a nineteen.
Okay.
People have jumped around a little bit on these numbers, so, thank you for checking it out.
Good evening, I'm Janet Wilson, part of our family's fourth-generation farming operation near rural Cloutier, and the wife of a Cloutier volunteer firefighter. I am speaking tonight in support of a moratorium on permitting wind turbines. We need to update our ordinances to include fire suppression in all industrial wind turbines. Our local volunteer firefighters face an unfair battle when it comes to industrial wind turbines that catch fire. Wind turbines can be anywhere from two hundred to more than six hundred fifty feet tall. That's far out of the reach of any local volunteer firefighter for their equipment. Home or combine fires in the country are hard to fight, especially in high-wind conditions like we've seen so often this year. They can spread and ignite acres of crops and threaten rural residencies. Unlike house and combine fires that are on the ground and within reach of firefighters and their water hoses, commercial wind turbines are a much greater fire risk. When wind turbines catch fire, all rural firefighters can typically do is watch them burn because of their extreme heights. Wind turbines contain upwards of seven hundred gallons of oil in the nasal to allow the massive turbine blades to rotate. That oil fuels the fires that fling sparks from the massive fiberglass composite blades to the property below, creating very hazardous conditions. Developers say fires are rare, they're far from it. Search YouTube for wind turbine fires and you can see how devastating they can be. Just last month, rural Williamsburg, Iowa suffered a turbine fire. That's why Tama County's minimal commercial wind energy ordinance needs to be updated to require that every wind turbine constructed in the county is equipped with its own fire suppression system. That's a minimum requirement to help protect lives, homes, farms, and crops from the risk of fire. Boone County, Missouri, and most other counties with modern ordinances require a fire suppression system to be installed in each new industrial wind turbine to help reduce the risk of fire. Stretching from twenty to sixty-five stories tall or more, commercial wind turbines are essentially high-rise electrical manufacturing plants. High-rise commercial buildings are required to be equipped with fire suppression systems. Commercial wind turbines in Tama County should be required as well. Please enact a moratorium on the construction of any new commercial wind projects or phases to them. This would allow more time to modernize our county's outdated commercial wind energy ordinance and include requirements for a fire suppression system to be installed in each commercial wind turbine. That would better protect the people and property of Tama County for current and future generations. Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna jump down to thirty-six, is the next signed-in member, Laura Wilson.
Hi, my name is Laura Wilson, um, I'm from Dyser, and I hope you pass a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for a moratorium on new industrial wind projects and phases. Because I believe a lot of detail needs to be added to our current industrial wind ordinance. Specifically, I would like to see a detailed complaint and compliance process in our ordinance, especially after this past spring and summer when multiple citizens had concerns about the non-compliance of the dugout mud pads in Tama County and their lack of adherence to the few stipulations that were included in the conditional use permits. As an example, I have information from the Almer Township, Michigan, twenty-twenty-two amended zoning ordinance. Their section on wind energy conversion systems starts on page forty-eight. Specifically, then on page fifty-six, section F, line nineteen, they discuss complaint resolutions. Line twenty continues with requirements of fifteen thousand dollars in escrow to cover the investigation costs of complaints. And then line twenty-two details the rights of their township, which would be similar to our own county's board, to shut down any unit that does not comply with the requirements until the W E C S unit meets those requirements or is removed. They have a separate section further detailing compliance, section H on page fifty-nine. Non-compliance at various stages of the project could result in denial or revocation of permits, fines, or decommissioning of the unit. Each day of violation would count as a separate offense. Their complaint process includes using a third-party entity in the receiving and investigating of complaints, with costs covered by the developer or project owner, and lists the specific times in which the investigation, hearings, decisions, and resolutions need to be completed. Worth County, Iowa's W E C S ordinance also has requirements of twenty-five thousand dollars in escrow to address noise complaint testing on their pages fourteen and fifteen. As we do not currently have any complaint process in our ordinances, having a moratorium would provide the time needed to research and add this topic, along with the many others that are discussed here tonight and discussed in your other zoning meetings the last couple of months. And while the supporters of industrial wind and the developers themselves say people opposed should just talk to the developers, the developers may promise certain things, but there's nothing proved in writing in our county's ordinances that can be enforced, and nothing that can protect the county from them changing their promises. You have my support and that of many others to make the moratorium recommendations on new industrial wind projects and phases. Thank you.
Karen Murray, number thirty-seven.
I don't know if I need the mic. Hi, I'm Karen Murray. We needed ordinance, we need to update our twenty-five-year-old ordinances, we need a moratorium to do that. Even though it was said tonight that they're, that we're the only county resisting, that's not true. There's a bunch of counties that have updated ordinances, it's just that this was snuck in on us, and we didn't know about it, thanks to China COVID. Um, I don't know why anybody would trust China, I mean, they are our enemy. They are making the turbines and the blades, they made coronavirus, we're farmers. I know a lot about, well, I'm not gonna, uh, talk about the health aspects of coronavirus, but we've been vaccinating it for it since the eighties, and all of a sudden it's all over people. Why is anybody trusting China or anything that they would say or that they would do? So we're giving our land fifty-year contracts to another country, we're giving up all of our good soil, we've, we have been stewards of this, of this county, most of us in this room, from the beginning, since the eighteen hundreds. Some people, in my family, it was in the eighteen hundreds, generations already. I, I, I'm afraid a lot of people signed these ordinances not knowing what they were signing because of the way this came in. There's so much evil that is attributed to this, just the fact that it came in, snuck in on people without us even knowing it, until March or February is when we found out about it. How can that be? And why didn't we know about it clear back, uh, four years ago, or three years ago? Why did we find out about it in twenty twenty-two? So that, just everything about this whole thing is, is the sneaking around, there's something, even the outburst a few minutes ago in here, where did that come from? Why? That, to me, that is, uh, um, a very loud symptom of, of some very bad things that are going on with this whole situation. We have to, this is not sustainable, we have to pay for this. We're gonna send everything out of this, out of this state, out of this, um, county, for, for county, for other counties, other states that use up all their natural resources and want ours. They want our water, they want our food, they want our energy. We're gonna give all of that to them, why? Why are we, and then what are we going to eat and drink five years from now? What are we going to live on? What are we going to, uh, use for livestock when our livestock is, is, uh, petrified of all the noise and the, and the stray voltage that's underground? And everybody that's for these turbines, that works for these companies, roll their eyes. Do your, do your homework, you guys. There's more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Winklepleck, number thirty.
First of all, I would like to thank the zoning commission for having the courage to stand up and do the job that they have been asked by our Tama County supervisors. They have been requested by the Tama County supervisors to do their job. Despite what the supervisors want, they continue not to listen to us. But I thank you for listening to the people. My name is John Winklepleck, I'm a fourth-generation farmer from Dyser, Iowa. I am here tonight to request a moratorium on any industrial wind projects and solar Aerial spraying is a vital part of everyone's farming operation. Industrial wind turbines make it very difficult, if not impossible, for those aerial applicators to do their job effectively in applying fungicides or other crop production materials. I have spoke with several aerial applicators who will not sign a contract with a farmer because of the dangers of aerial, because of the dangers of industrial turbines and aerial application. If they so do, the cost is prohibitive. With an acre of corn costing over a thousand dollars an acre to produce, we don't need any more production cost. My grandfather once said, "If you take care of the land, the land will take care of you." It has certainly done that. Speaking on a few other things, I will not be intimidated by any Salt Creek lawyers or our group. You want to talk about bullying? The people that come here tonight, the proof is in the pudding, people. Salt Creek needs three lawyers and a developer, and whatever Tom is, to stick up for what they do in Tama County. The people are here, the people, the taxpayers that care are here. There's nobody that has more of an investment in this county than the Tama County taxpayers that live here. Nobody needs to hear about what we've got invested. Nobody has a larger investment than the people of Tama County. I formally request that you impose a moratorium on any industrial wind projects. Thank you in advance.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, I'm Kathy Craftka-Harkema, and I'm a fourth-generation crop and livestock farmer from Dyser. Our family also farms in Powashoot County, so I can speak firsthand what it's really like to live around the wind turbines in Powashoot County and the Mahaska County area. And as John Winklepleck just said, the people who care are here tonight, and we thank you on the zoning commission for having this opportunity and for doing your job to listen to the citizens of Tama County. My family are taxpayers in Tama County, our family farm will be a century farm in just two years. And we want to remember that it's important to get it right, and we know that a lot has changed in farming technology... And we know that a lot has changed in farming technology in twenty-four years since these ordinances were updated. We know that the turbines that were two hundred feet tall twenty-four years ago are six hundred and fifty feet tall today. That's taller than any building in Iowa. The tallest building in Iowa is forty-five stories tall. It's important for us to take the time to get the ordinances right. We are looking out for the interests of the developers, for the people who may have signed an easement, as well as those who choose not to. And that's why we know that the many gaps in the Tama County ordinances for wind and solar must be updated. And especially in the solar area, if you listen to the zoning hearings in Lynn County, you should be very concerned about any proposed battery storage projects and the gaps in our ordinances related to those because of the safety hazards of battery storage. So we've tried to be positive on behalf of the Tama County Against Turbines Coalition, factual, citing sources, providing real-life examples, asking questions. We are not bullies. Our role as private citizens is not to meet with the developers. The responsibility here lies with you as the zoning officials for doing your job to recommend ordinance updates and a moratorium if you so choose to recommend that to the board of supervisors. And it's up to the county to enforce the ordinances and develop them. It's not the developer's role to tell the county what ordinances we need. It's we, the people, who decide that. And we have not taken a single approach just looking at Worth County. They just happen to be the county that just spent three years and adopted theirs in June of this year, but we've looked nationwide, Almer Township, Michigan, Boone County, Missouri. We provided those ordinances to the supervisor. So I think when people resort to name-calling, it means they don't have anything to stand on in terms of their own facts. So the facts speak for themselves. This is a positive coalition that cares about Tama County, and we know you do too. And I've got a sheet that just provides the responsibilities of the zoning commission. We commend you and thank you for your courage and your leadership on behalf of the people of Tama County.
I believe that's everyone that signed up that wanted to speak on wind. I've got three or four individuals here that couldn't make it tonight, but I'm going to read at this time. Hi, my name is Dennis Wilson. I am a sixty-eight-year-old, third-generation farmer. I still farm today and live on the family farm in Tama County. I enjoy nature, from deer to eagles, geese, ducks, and conserving our land now and for future generations. I am in favor of a moratorium on industrial wind projects. In twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, we put in two ponds on our farm on a large wetland project on our landlord's farm. We did this in hope of attracting even more wildlife. Why do we want to endanger them by putting industrial wind turbines and solar fields in the area? We need a moratorium to update our county's outdated ordinances. That was Dennis Wilson.
You're done. They're not here.
You want me to get up there? Up there? Sorry. My name is Aaron Kniebel. Did I say that right? I live in rural Tama County with my family on our acreage. I am in favor of a moratorium. As a county, we deserve the chance and right to publicly discuss wind and solar projects. The county ordinances need to be updated to represent present-day technologies. It is no longer about a windmill to fill a cattle tank or a solar panel to run an electric fencer. We are facing industrial-sized projects taking advantage of our county if we don't make changes. This is something that shouldn't be decided by just a few people. This affects a lot of people. It takes time to research and discuss what's best for the county. Everyone has investments and a future in this county to protect. And if there is a middle ground to be found, it should benefit all, not a few. That was Aaron Kniebel. I believe, oh, I've got two more. This is from Lisa and Mike Thompson of Rural Trere. The original setback ordinance was first approved in ninety-eight, reapproved in twenty-ten, and again in twenty-twenty. Twenty-two years with no changes or research, even after the board was presented with over eight hundred signatures requesting an updated ordinance. All the while, commercial wind towers were getting taller and more powerful with longer blades. One thousand feet setback from dwellings is no longer sufficient, given the towers can reach a height of four hundred feet or more with blade lengths of over one hundred twenty feet. These measurements will only grow, and at minimum, that is over half the setback distance. Given the recorded instances of blade detachment, ice, throw, and fire, this one thousand feet is nowhere near enough distance. Granted, while these issues are somewhat rare, they still happen, and is the board willing to take that chance? When asked why the ordinance was approved again with no updates, Larry Vest stated at a board of supervisors meeting, "I cannot and will not risk financial loss." So it seems that money is much more important to Larry Vest than the safety of his constituents. Also part of the setback equation is the noise that a wind farm produces. The current Tama County ordinance on wind towers lists a maximum noise level of sixty d B A. Most evenings, the sound level around our acreage measures under thirty d B A. Given that the scale to measure sound is logarithmic and not linear, the difference between those two numbers is one thousand times. That's right, sixty d B A is one thousand times louder than thirty d B A. Included in the setback issue is the problem of shadow flicker. Both the noise and shadow flicker have been documented adversely affecting people's health. This does not begin to address the problems of sacred livestock, migratory predatory bird death by blade strikes, or bat death from major air pressure changes around the tower from the turning blades. And then there is the issue of the tax assessment on wind farm in Tama County, going from zero percent in one year to being capped at thirty percent in year seven. How does this happen? How is this fair to the citizens? Our assessed value went up over seventy-three thousand from last year to this year. On a five-acre home, it's seventy-three thousand dollars in one year? Will our assessment go down after these towers are installed? What about our property value when it comes to the time to sell this property? Who in their right mind would pay good money to live in the shadow of these towers? Quality of life used to mean something in Iowa, but I'm having my doubts here in Tama And the last one I've got is Tricia Yeshehna from Toledo, rural Toledo. Dear Board of Zoning, my husband James and I, along with our two daughters, live in rural Toledo north of town. We farm row crops and have a cow-calf operation. I spoke up against the wind turbines in December twenty-twenty via the Zoom meeting when the condition-of-use permit was approved on the Phase One of the Salt Creek Wind Project. I stated that I felt that the public had not been informed of the project, and that instead of making a decision that day, I feel that the public should be able to vote. I did not feel it was right that they were just releasing the projected turbine map on the day that the permit was being approved, and many did not know that the meeting was even taking place. My family is one hundred percent in favor of more time on any and all wind turbines being constructed in Tama County. We live in the county for several reasons, and being surrounded by turbines is not one of them. Has anyone else here got something to read from someone else that couldn't attend tonight on wind pertaining to wind turbines? If not, we've got a handful that have signed up for solar. I'm going to go ahead and move forward with them. We've been here almost an hour and a half, so we'll keep it moving. First one I've got is Al Schaefer.
I live in Dyzerd, Iowa. I've been a farmer all my life. As far as solar goes on farmland, it would be the last thing that should ever be done to farmland. Solar would take the whole farm, won't leave space to farm any inch of it. It will be totally consumed by the solar. When we're done, as I mentioned last time, who's going to clean this up? Do you have any money to clean it up? I feel very sorry for the people that sign up to do solar or wind, because they're the ones that are getting taken advantage of, because then their grandkids will, will get stuck with a sixty-foot, six-hundred-foot tower that's got to have a light on the top of it. They'll have to keep that running, even if they don't tear it down, it'll cost them a million dollars to get rid of it. So who would sign an agreement with anybody that thirty, sixty years from now, you've got to tear it down? If it's a solar project, how are you going to take all that off of your farm? It is just unreasonable to think that anybody would sign anything like that. I personally have had contacts to put solar on my farms. I asked him for the contract, I read the contract, he called back, said, "Are you ready to sign?" I said, "Why would I sign this? I signed all my rights away." Once you sign that, you have no rights on your farm. Even if it's a wind tower that only takes up two acres, you've signed up the rights to the whole farm is gone. They tell you what you can do, what you can't do. I would hope that these people that are putting up these wind towers would think a little bit about the people that they are destroying that signed up. I have four moratoriums on wind and solar.
I'm not going to pronounce your last name. I'll get it wrong. Kniebel? Kniebel?
Kniebel. Kniebel and bits. All right, Heather Kniebel again, from rural, rural Trere. So industrial solar, I know that's somewhat new of a topic. We do not currently have any good industrial solar ordinances. We do have a solar ordinance that was added a couple of years ago, but nothing good about industrial. So we've seen what our neighbors in Iowa to the east have, have going on. There's some lawsuits now after the fact, so we really need to look at that. So I know in the Senate a while back, there was a, some talk of trying to do sixty-five CSR to restrict where you cannot put it on sixty-five CSR or higher. I don't think that went anywhere yet, but it's, it's a topic that even in our upper government of Iowa have been talking about that. So definitely takes up a lot of land, definitely in favor of a, a moratorium on that. We need to do more work. There's a lot of counties that don't even have solar ordinances to this day, and as others said, we have companies already coming around asking farmers for land, you know, these, they could probably put them pretty close to your houses. We just, we don't have things in place to protect people. There's a lot of, a lot of risks that can come up. So definitely in favor of it. We need to do our homework. This one, I like that you guys did twelve months. It's going to take time. You know, we're going to have to probably go to other counties and try to learn from others. We have to learn. We can't just, let's throw this up and see what happens and deal with the problems later. Our future and our generations are too important for this. So let's think about it, guys. Thank you.
Looks like the next one is Scott Snyder on solar.
I'm Scott Snyder, living north of Clutier. I spoke a little bit ago about a moratorium on wind and solar, a lot of concerns with the solar. You put in all these solar panels and everything else, you get a snowstorm. All the electricity that it produces now has to heat the solar panels to get rid of the ice. So now that, all that power is wasted. Now, dust, when these solar panels get covered with dust, they have to have cleaners go over them. When the cleaners go over them, they suck up all the power that these things are making. When they get broken, when they have to be replaced, who takes care of it? What's left over, and where does it go? Another question, where are they manufactured? Another question, what kind of pollutants are used to manufacture these things? And what countries are using, are they taking care of their environment as they produce these elements for all of these things? Your batteries, all this stuff that goes with all of this renewables. It's not renewable. It's destroying everything. Natural gas is clean burning. Coal in this country, you can burn coal super clean. You have fly ash left over, they use it in concrete, they use it as fillers. It's not that detrimental. As far as your carbon footprint, why are we not keying in on cars going a hundred miles to a gallon on fossil fuels? Why are we keying in on electric cars with lithium batteries that die and fill landfills? Mother Nature can absorb many of the pollutants we put out every time a volcano erupts. Do you know how much pollution is put into the air, spewed into the atmosphere? More than we've put out. They know it. And Mother Nature, and the way God created everything, can absorb all these things. Our responsibility is to use our resources more wisely. Thank you.
Janet Wilson on solar.
I'm Janet Wilson, resident of rural Clutier and the wife of a Clutier volunteer firefighter. I'm speaking tonight in support of a moratorium on commercial solar projects until Tama County can reverse its outdated ordinance. Firefighter safety is jeopardized by solar panels with electrocution as a genuine hazard, as well as toxic chemicals released into the atmosphere. It is not well-known that insurers are becoming more reluctant to cover solar panels. Insurers feel the solar industry may be underestimating the risk of fire at solar projects, partly due to lack of data in this relatively new industry, but some also question if fires at solar projects are just being underreported. With exponential growth in the renewable energy sector, as well as aging infrastructure, the number of fire occurrences will only increase. There were one hundred fifty-five solar panel fires since twenty-fifteen, with seventy-one of those being commercial. Fires rose thirty-six percent from twenty-seventeen to twenty-eighteen, according to the U.S. Fire Administration. Owners often rely on their insurance provider to cover the losses rather than implementing fire suppression technology. Owners should include in their solar projects inspection and testing by third parties, incorporate additional safety components whenever possible, create standardized quality assurance measures, and ensure that defective or prematurely aged components are promptly replaced. Please work to incorporate these safety measures into our Tama County commercial solar ordinance before any further permitting is done. Thank you.
I believe our next one is Laura Wilson on solar, or yes, on solar.
My name is Laura Wilson from Dyzerd, and I support a recommendation for a moratorium for new industrial solar projects in Tama County. I do not feel that Tama County or its citizens are protected with what we currently have. Many of the same issues that people have come up with for wind ordinances are also the same issues as with industrial solar. Prime farmland of CSR seventy or higher should not be taken out of production for the immense length of time that comes with solar easements. As Al mentioned, it does take up the entire farm in most cases with solar. Like with industrial wind ordinances, there is no complaint process or compliance enforcement detailed in our current ordinances. And also, similar to industrial wind, there is no language in our zoning ordinances to ensure decommissioning of solar projects. I'm not against farmers utilizing individual solar projects in their yards or their farm buildings, but industrial solar projects take prime farmland out of production and are not covered in our current ordinances. Please recommend a moratorium on new solar projects. Thank you.
That'd be our last speaker for solar concerning the solar, this is Kathy Craftka-Harkema.
Well, thank you. When we're sitting here tonight, I'm thinking about my days in FFA and soil conservation speaking, and one thing still sticks with me. It takes a hundred years to form one inch of topsoil. And those of us who farm understand how precious the soil is here in Tama County. We do everything that we can to- We do everything that we can to care for it and nurture it, because we know if we don't take care of the land, it won't take care of our families. So compaction is really critical. And where our family farm is, we can see Benton County. We only wish we were in Benton County, because Benton County has the vision to understand how precious that resource is. Benton County has enacted an approach to land use regulations that no industrial projects are allowed, period, on land with 70 CSR or higher. We have some of the most productive soil here in Tama County in the world. That's why Pioneer has a plant here in Toledo and one in Dizer. And seed corn is grown in Tama County that provides the corn around the world. Solar takes more land out of production even than wind. Agriculture is number one in this county. It is, it was, it always will be. And some of these short-term operations that are here today and gone tomorrow are here for their pockets, not ours, and not our livelihood, and that of our future generations. Those of us who raise crops and livestock understand what it takes to earn an honest living. And we understand how important land use issues are. We also understand, as evidenced by the capacity overflowing crowd here in this room, it's time for Tama County to get serious about our land use regulations, learn from others, and not sit back and say, "I wish I would have done something," or "if I would have only known," or "I didn't realize what it's really like," like you hear in every county that has industrial wind or industrial solar. There's nobody here from Tama County tonight that has spoken up in favor of either commercial wind or commercial solar. You're hearing from outsiders only, who have their own interests at stake. So please consider doing the right thing. And again, if you are in the business of industrial wind or industrial solar, what are you afraid of? If the county takes a pause to simply stop any new permitting, learn from others, take the time to get it right, so that you can truly look yourself in the eye and look in the eye of all the people here in the room and know that you are doing right by the peoples who live here and the future generations of people who live here. Thank you.
I know that's exactly why you're here. That's exactly why it took three attorneys from Des Moines.
He left. Kurt Burden didn't even speak on his own.
That's because they're tired of getting bullied by TCA.
Hold on, I'm going to interrupt you guys for a second, please. Everybody's had a chance to speak and signed up, or they couldn't be here. I'll ask one more time, does anybody have any papers with them that someone else sent that wasn't able to be here tonight to want to speak? I better get over to the mic.
Yeah.
Sorry. I want to clarify a few things with comments that were made tonight. No, we don't have a quorum tonight, so we can't officially recommend to the supervisors that, as with a quorum that we recommended it, these moratoriums. But we have a lot of, as Kathy mentioned here, we have a lot of Tama County landowners here. Everybody almost is here from Tama County, and they care about their land. Now, in defense of why we don't have a quorum, I have nothing against our former chairman that resigned. He hit retirement age. He didn't want all this stress. He says, "I just want to retire. I think I'm going to resign." And he mentioned that to our zoning administrator, who said, "Well, if you resign, I'm going to resign." Well, that didn't happen. We've had, we've had these discussions going on for months. We've had an opportunity for someone else to be appointed to our zoning board, so we could have a quorum. We have four people on it now. One which always finds an inconvenience for not being here tonight, or maybe it's because he's got an easement on his property, which would kind of be a little bit of a conflict of interest. We have another young man that just finished harvest in his defense, saying he was going to be here tonight, but he couldn't be, or he isn't here. I'm trying to point out that we have a quorum here if the board of supervisors would have taken the time to appoint another member to our county's zoning board. Yes, I'm not speaking on behalf of a quorum here, but I'm speaking on behalf of my conscience. I, I feel like it was my duty to do something. When I went to a few supervisors' meetings, well, I wanted to clarify. Nobody from TCAT ever bullied me into, or bullied any of us into having these meetings. We're farmers. We care about the land. We care about our future generations. That's why we're continuing to push to have meetings. And I think several of you made the great comments that it's, our roots are here. The people that want to build these turbines are not from here. I'm not going to say anymore. My three minutes will be up. I want to thank you all for coming. Thank you all for taking the time. The weather isn't the prettiest out there tonight, and I appreciate it. I could just challenge you as members of Tama County to contact your supervisors and say, "Hey, they didn't have a quorum. They couldn't make an official decision tonight, but it was obvious what the consensus was." So please contact your supervisors. We're going to have a change of supervisors after the first of the year. Maybe there'll be a change of attitude. We will see. Thank you once again for coming and for everyone helping out, volunteering to help out.
Do you plan to hold another public hearing, or a public hearing when we could have a chance for a forum?
We'll reflect on that. We're going to take a little time to think about that and talk about it. Probably try to, yes, but I've got to get, I need another person to be on the zoning board.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
If our conflicted zoning commissioner would recuse himself, you would have had a quorum tonight, two out of three.
Say that again.
If your person with a conflict of interest had recused himself, which means stepped back, you would have had a quorum tonight. Two out of three. It would have been two out of three.
Right, right.
I'm not sure about that. We'd have to dig into that.
Wade, you got anything you want to add?
No, I just, I wish we could have had a quorum and really, and then had a decision. Appreciate everybody coming, you guys.
Because it's productive, Nick, even though we can't go away with an official recommendation to the supervisors. I, I've enjoyed hearing everybody tonight, and I better quit with that before I say something I shouldn't say. Thank you again.